Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Dearborn Board of Education. Today is Monday, December 7th, 2020. This meeting is scheduled for 7:00 PM. I believe it's almost 7:05. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom. Meeting number is 856-2539-8205. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call vote of the board members. New member, Patrick Dambrosio.
Here.
Mary Lane is here. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here in Dearborn.
Oh, that's right.
Dearborn as well.
Yes. Trustee Dambrosio, where are you?
Here in Dearborn.
And trustee Lane is also present in Dearborn. Jim Thorpe.
Here in Dearborn.
Mary Petchlikoff.
Here in Dearborn.
Hussein Barry.
I'm here. I'm going to be the odd one today. I'm quarantined out in Milford for tonight. Next item, Madam Secretary, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Reema Yunus, Principal of Lori School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, President Barry, trustees, and Dr. Maleko. My name is Reema Yunus, Principal of Lori School, and I am honored to introduce third grader Malakawada, eighth graders Miriam Habhab and Mustafa Harajli to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all please stand and face the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is a very exciting one. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next item is the Oath of Office for new board member. Board member Patrick Dambrosio will take the oath of office at this time, administered by Dearborn Judge Jean Hunt. Judge Hunt and Patrick Dambrosio will stand, and with right hands raised, Judge Hunt will ask him to repeat after him the following oath of office.
Okay. Pat, go ahead. You on the screen?
Yep, I see you.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I do hereby swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do hereby swear and affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of office of trustee of the school district of the city of Dearborn.
Of office of the trustee of the school district of the city of Dearborn.
To the best of my ability and the manner provided by law.
To the best of my ability and the manner provided by law.
Okay. Congratulations, trustee Dambrosio.
Thank you, Honorable Judge. It's always a pleasure.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, next item, please.
The next items are the superintendent's update. Traditionally, the superintendent has asked for a moment of silence for COVID. I'm just butting in a little bit to remind him that today is also Pearl Harbor Day on 1941, when the United States was attacked by Japan. It's a good time to think about peace in the world. And then it's, next week will also be the eighth anniversary of the Sandy Hook shooting. So I just want to ask the superintendent if he would also remind us of those things.
Sure. So appreciate that, trustee Lane. And so when we do our moment of silence, we've been doing this since the start of the pandemic. And so for Pearl Harbor, we will, and the details that trustee Lane mentioned will be included in our thoughts during the moment of silence. I wanted to mention right now, and we know we're going through the toughest time right now with the current COVID situation, is we have a 281,000 deaths approximately in the U.S. and 10,300 in Michigan. So again, a moment of silence for all those who may be suffering or lost a loved one. Thoughts and prayers go out to them and their families. Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Yes. So I guess I'll just go through my agenda then, President.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So just, I will just mention, since it was on the agenda, I know we gave him a clap, but it's been already great talking to trustee Dambrosio. And so, you know, welcome. I look forward to working with you on the board. And I know the rest of the trustees do as well. So again, congratulations on the oath in being part of the school board.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm honored to be able to serve on this board. And I would like to thank all the voters for supporting me and electing me to the Dearborn School Board to represent them. So again, I thank you, and it's an honor to be able to serve on this board.
All right. Thank you. So I have my other agenda items under retirements. I want to, every month, we have retirees and we congratulate them. We thank them for the years of service for the benefit of the students, whether they, you know, are directly in front of students as a teacher, as an administrator or someone in the school, or just providing support for the students. So we value all our employees, and we have the best employees in Dearborn schools. So all those who have been part of the district, we want to recognize our great retirees. So what we have here is Karen Andrews with 35 years of experience. Donald Claremont, over 20 years of experience. Patricia Griffin, over 25 years of experience. Linda Hippel, over 24 years. Margaret Kraft, over 20 years. Catherine Kempton, 22 years. Vincent La Croix, over 18 years. Gay Loviski, 19 years. Anne McCory, over nine years. Paul Piranha, over 24 years of service. Lori Pop, over 24 years as well. Susan Powers, over 24 years. Andrea Sims, over 14 years. Deborah Sotarski, over 13 years. Rita Strigallis, 25 years of service. And Khadija Bazey, over 23 years of service. Many of them I've interacted with personally or worked with personally. And I know we have a large district, but I want to thank, let's show appreciation and congratulate all our retirees, and they will receive a note from me. Congratulations. Thank you. So I will continue down with now my non-agenda items. Just wanted to mention with the situation with the COVID data, and thanks to the great nurses that we have and we're on top of the data. I did receive a message just before the meeting from Nurse Khan. And I shared this at the last board meeting, our dashboard. I want to thank the board for, you know, using the metrics. Unfortunately, the Wayne County positivity rate is going up, and we all anticipated this, you know, that it's going to be a tough couple of months coming up, we believe. If not, hopefully, hopefully less than that. But, you know, we all have braced ourselves for this tough time right now. And so the positivity rate that is coming out now is 15.6. Last time we reported it officially from the county was 14.1. I will mention, just she shared a couple of other statistics. We have ICU rates at 82% and 75% overall with the hospitalization. We are still in Area E of the matrix. I know I went over that last month, so I'm not going to go into depth on that today. But that is the other metrics we're using for the risk category that Wayne County provides. That does put, I think, believe, almost all districts in Wayne County are in that highest risk category. I think it's no surprise to anybody. And again, I want to say that I think I appreciate the support of the board, our administration, working with our employees. You know, the leadership of the board, President Barry, and how we've worked through this. We know that we've had to make some tough decisions that haven't always pleased all. But say this, and the board knows this, and, you know, I know the public does because I put out notices. You know, we've always tried to stay ahead, balancing the health and safety of the community with the needs of our students. And so one of the more recent measures we took before the governor made her decision a few weeks ago, that basically we were already a situation where we were online. We also started limiting access into buildings as far as not only students, which is also aligned with what the governor's order, or excuse me, the Health Department's order with the governor there, because it officially falls under the Health Department. And so our decision to do that and for the public to just try to limit the number of traffic in the building. I mentioned that, including myself. You know, I was, there was a time when we opened in June, I was going to the building, sometimes three, four days a week, five days a week when needed, and now I've pulled back. Today is our first fully board virtual meeting that we've had since June, to be honest. We've had a partial. But I think it's the responsible thing that the board and we've decided to do, because all we're trying to do is do our part. And I think we've helped to limit the potential that it could have been higher for the spread within the community. And so I have, we have not had as many, what we call incident reports or cases within the schools specifically. And so these are tough decisions, because of course we have a plan. We wanted in-person instruction. But we've made those decisions. And just, you know, so the public knows, we're trying to tell the public for the next little bit, until the numbers get better, to start with health and safety, limit the amount of traffic in the buildings for parents, even, you know, set up an appointment. We put out the message. We're all leading by example. Again, today, the board and I are leading by example, you know, by running this virtual meeting. We're all doing the same thing. We're asked to limit, you know, I will go into the office when I need to, but we're limiting it, and we're doing it just to limit contact tracing. And that was some of the recommendations we had from our nurses and what we decided to do. So I think we were very responsible. I would also mention that the governor also, and I did not get a good chance to look at it in depth today. I did speak to President Barry about it this afternoon, but there was an extension to the order that basically, and I'll just speak to the part portion that impacted the public education, was basically to maintain online for schools. For us, it didn't have a great impact, because we already were, and we were kind of ahead of the game. There's other nuances when you get into special ed and ELL, but our team will be looking at that tomorrow. Cabinet, I haven't had the time to look at the new renewal in depth. We will look at it, and we'll make adaptations as needed and modify for the best interest of our students. But as I just mentioned, our positivity rate did go up. I think everyone anticipated it. We know we have other holidays coming up as well. And so I did just want to comment on the COVID data. But I think, you know, tough decisions have been made, and we'll continue to make them. But we're balancing that need between the health and safety of the community along with the safety of our students, our staff. And so I think the board has made some extremely difficult decisions, but some decisions that we've stood by for the benefit of the community. Okay, so I have a couple more. I want to mention this, just this afternoon. We, I was a pleasure, and I know some of the trustees joined. I believe trustee McDonald, trustee Thorpe, and I saw trustee Lane, and I don't know if anyone else got, was in there. But my colleague and over on the Henry Ford College side, Russ Cavalluna, did a great job in bringing this financial literacy partnership, working with Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist. And today, we launched it. We had a full statewide publication, PR session via Teams. It was very positive. And so Dearborn Schools, because of that wonderful partnership we have and the great work that's happening over at the college, and again, I want to reiterate, I really appreciate the work that they're doing and the leadership, President Cavalluna, and the great communication that he and I have on these issues. And again, sometimes I talk to the board president, I talk to all trustees, I talk to my administration, but I'm talking to President Cavalluna and communicating just as much. It's just the way we've learned to operate. So anyway, this is a great opportunity for our students. It's the ability, again, to get college credit, working in the P-12 school with a course under also the leadership of Director Magic Fidella and Shannon Peterson and others. And it's another way for us to expand our dual enrollment, our collegiate academy, and all the things that we offer our students. The governor, the lieutenant governor were extremely pleased. I believe there was a lot of people in there. And I did, because we were in another meeting at 5:00, the closed session, I did not get to see it, but Director Fidella told me we were on the news because of that. So it's a real positive. I just want to thank the college, and I want to thank the board, and we did thank the board in there. You know, thank the Department of Treasury as well, and the state for, you know, pretty much allowing that to happen. So I think it's just a great opportunity for this financial literacy, personal financial literacy class for our students.
Dr. Maleko, I'd like to ask a question about it.
Sure.
I'm guessing that perhaps the financial literacy class will take the place of one of the math classes. Although I don't know that, I would urge that. I remember when the Michigan Legislature started mandating what classes. We went from only PE being required to a whole plethora of required classes in the curriculum. But in any case, it was mandated at that time that students take mathematics up to Algebra II level. Personally, I liked mathematics, and I did pretty well. So it's not that I don't believe that math isn't important, but I don't think that every student going through our school system is going to become an engineer or needs to, or they just shouldn't. So at that time, we expressed some concerns. And I recall sitting in on an IEP of one of our brilliant videographers. A young woman who was doing a really fabulous job was admitted, I think, to UCLA Film School. And she had a really promising career ahead of her, but she could not get through Algebra II. And her parents begged. And she did finally get an exception, a waiver of some kind. I think it was because she was math-phobic. But they wanted her to take personal finance, which would have been really useful to her. And instead, the state insisted that she had to have Algebra II. It's the kind of imposition of standards that sometimes doesn't really make sense to individual lives. So I'd like a little more information. I hope you'll explain that. Maybe it'll be coming out in the future. But I hope that the state government will consider that this would be a substitute maybe for Algebra II.
I can comment. It did come up in there just to answer trustee Lane. There was a question, and Director Fidella and Shannon Peterson, and I can kind of provide that. It can be used. This is a pilot class. So we will be looking for the ability to use it in lieu of a senior math class. Right now, students can use it as a personal, they call it personal curriculum. So it can be built into individual student plan. But we can also look at, you know, expanding that. And again, that was commented on by Director Fidella at this session today. So we definitely have the ability to move in that direction. And technically, right now, it can be implemented on an individual basis. But I believe based on what the state says, that's one of the things that they want to look at is, because this is a pilot, how can it be replicated not only for Dearborn schools, but we're going to be leading the way for other districts across the state as well. So I think more conversation to come on that.
Great.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. I was at the kickoff today, and I believe trustee Petchlikoff and I were both at the initial meeting over a year ago at the college. But what a grand opportunity this is for our students. I'm so excited about the pilot program. And when my son was just home on leave recently, he initiated a conversation with me about mortgages and escrow accounts and taxes and insurance and all of these financial things. And we had a really long conversation. And while we were having this conversation, I was thinking how important it is for all of our students to have information, to have a basic knowledge of these things for success in their lives. And once again, Dearborn and Henry Ford College are leading the way. So I'm just very excited about the program, and I think it's going to be very beneficial to our students and then eventually to students around the state.
Thank you. Want to continue, Dr. Maleko?
Okay, I have one more thing. It's the holiday season, and I know we're approaching it. I know it's been a different year for everyone. I know, you know, with the COVID situation, we all will look back on 2020 and at some point in the rearview mirror, and we will, you know, say, you know, we're glad we've got, we're through it. At the same token, I think we've learned a lot about each other during this tough times. We've had challenges. But it's also been a testament to how people work together, I believe, despite some of the different controversy that is also out there. And despite some of the decisions that we have had to make that may not please everyone. I feel very good about the leadership of our district, about the board, about working with the college, and the fact that we've really truly done our best for the best interest of the students. I want to thank the board for that, for allowing me to lead in the district and working with you. I appreciate all the work you do, and I truly wish you all the best for a holiday season. The same token, I want to send it out to the community and the staff. You know, you've stood by, I can say, to our executive cabinet, to cabinet, to administrators, to principals, to all our ministers. A lot of those individuals, honestly, there was really no summer, not only not in travel, but it was no time off, because we were constantly working to try to put together a program for our students in something that none of us had ever anticipated, and none of us had ever went to school for, and none of us had ever studied for. You know, our teachers came up and stepped up. At Dearborn, we lead the way. We had 100 people in our reopening committee. We have had disagreements. It's all healthy. We've had people and students come before the board and publicly comment on and advocate. I have my student advisory council, so our great students in Dearborn. Again, this financial literacy class is another example, but we continue to work together for the community, for the staff. So I just want to say, I truly do wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, even though it may be different this year. And I also say, be cautious too. Let's understand that we have to sacrifice now, because we know the churn is coming at some point. And so let's do what we need now to sacrifice to make sure that we can get back and can, we will get back. And I know we will for in-person instruction. So I want to wish our entire staff and community, our great students, a wonderful holiday season. And thank you for standing by us. Thank you for standing by us and understanding the difficult decisions. But have some downtime as well, and enjoy the time with you and your families when we are off and when we don't have to Zoom every day, right? Or we don't have to Google Teams and have all the online, because we are so accustomed to that right now. And I know the students can use a break, and the parents and everyone. So from the bottom of my heart, I just truly appreciate everyone, and I just wish you all, you know, our entire staff and community, parents, a good holiday season. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next item.
That's all I have.
Next items are recognition and acknowledgements. The first up is musical performance by the Dearborn High School Women's Ensemble.
Hello. It is my pleasure to once again present some music of the season to our December board meeting. Tonight, you are going to be hearing from Dearborn High School's Women's Ensemble. They will be performing two pieces for you. "We Need a Little Christmas" and "My True Love Gave to Me." Jennifer Pagowski is our director at Dearborn High. Ms. Pagowski has been in our district for 25 years. And for the past 20 years, she has had the distinct privilege of conducting the honors choir at the middle school level. Let's welcome Dearborn High School's Women Ensemble.
Hi, my name is Olivia Kirk.
Hi, my name is Sophie Wheeler.
Today, we will be performing "My True Love Gave to Me." Please enjoy.
What to do with the presents?
What to do with the things?
What to do with the treasures that my true love brings?
What to do with the partridge?
What to do with the tree?
What to do with the presents my true love gave to me?
What to do with the ladies?
Always with their tans?
What to do with the French hens?
Send them back to France?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I didn't mean to try to cut it short. What a great performance. Thank you very much.